Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and now we have next, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. All right, next we have citizens' concerns on agenda items. Do we have anyone signed up for that?
No, we did not online.
Okay. All right, looks like we don't have any. So now we're gonna move on to news of note and presentations.
Okay, first I'd like to do our school board recognition month is this month here, so I'd like to recognize the school board members for all your help, all the support, and also I think each school board member have a certificate in front of them for recognition. I'm just gonna hold it up for everyone, community members. We know there's a lot of phone calls, emails, endless hours, activities, events from schools, community functions that you all attend, and we appreciate it. Like to read a resolution that we have as well. Whereas our district values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children, and whereas the board of members contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Oberlin City Schools Board of Education, and whereas these local decision makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operations, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communication loop with all segments of the community, and whereas the board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, I hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Oberlin City School Board and proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-three as School Board Recognition Month. Join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of all our board members. Once again, thank you. Next, we have our senior class graduation presentation. The district has been very, has been reviewing graduation location options for this school year. We have been gathering input from students and staff. We have developed a presentation for the board to review options for this school year. And here we have members of the administrative staff to review the options that we analyze and scenarios.
Austin Smith, for those of you that don't know me, I'm the administrative assistant at the high school as well as the senior class advisor. And so this is our proposal for continuing our graduation ceremony at LC. So why do we want to do it at the Stocker Center? So first off, we have the parking. So there is ample amount of parking space at LCC as well as handicap parking, so we know all of our guests will be able to park close to the facility. Whereas at Finney Chapel, there is very limited parking. As you can see here, this is the parking lot, and the red space there, we cannot park due to construction. After that, there's the seating. We have way more tickets available to us if we have the graduation at LC. All of our families can sit together, whereas at Finney Chapel, the families must be divided up, and those with mobility issues are not always able to get up into the balcony area. Also at LC, there is a loop in the front of the building that allows you to drive up close, get out, and for those that are not as able, be able to get into the building easier. At Finney Chapel, the only access for those that are not able is through the back doors of the facility. Also with seating for those that are handicapped, there are over forty designated handicap seats in the LCC auditorium. Whereas Finney has no designated handicap seating and is not ADA compliant in terms of restrooms or seating. Audiovisual at LC, last year at our graduation, we were able to have a slideshow that featured some of our graduates and where they were going to college. They also gave us an AV technician hands-on in the facility to run that for us. Whereas at Finney Chapel, they only provided us microphones. We cannot do anything visual, no PowerPoints, no slideshows, anything like that. At LC, weather does not matter because there is ample space inside the facility for families to meet before, after, to take pictures. Whereas at Finney Chapel, if, they can only gather outside, so if weather is bad, you cannot take pictures before. The graduates can't take pictures in the rain. Security, LCC provides all the security for us. Whereas at Finney Chapel, we have to hire Oberlin Police Department and others to work, including ushers. And last year, LCC was very helpful. There was a family member that kept trying to move up to the stage, and they made sure that they did not get on the stage and interrupt the ceremony. And as you can see, here's, we have two pictures from graduation last year. You can see how large the stage is and how all of our graduates could be on the stage as well as our board members, and it's just a really nice place for graduation. Thank you.
I'd like to hear what the other, the requests from the students, because I know that all of the input that I've received from the community has been for the opposite position.
Absolutely. So we did a survey with the senior class, and sixty-six percent of our seniors were actually in favor of LC. So ninety percent of our students said that they would prefer that our families be able to sit together. Like I said, at Finney, they would only get about five seats in the lower part and five seats up. And so their families would have to be separated, whereas LC, we would get more seats, and they would all be able to sit together. Seventy-three percent of our senior class voted that parking close and parking onsite was very beneficial to them, and that they would prefer that LC over Finney. And seventy-three percent of our kids said that they supported having air conditioning, which LC has, and confirmed today, Finney Chapel does not.
Okay, so we had been told at some point that Finney Chapel now has air conditioning. That is not correct?
Correct. We spoke on the phone today with Oberlin College, and they do not have air conditioning in the facility yet.
And then you said ninety percent of students said what?
That they would prefer that their families be able to sit together at the ceremony.
Okay, and then I don't know if you have this information, but what's the difference in cost between the two?
Yeah, so last year, we paid eighteen hundred dollars for LC. Whereas at Finney, in past years, we paid five hundred dollars for the facility. We had to pay, depending on the year and how many security, we had to pay, we've paid upwards of a thousand dollars for security. And then we also have to pay to hire an organist to pay onsite during the ceremony.
And do you know how much that was?
That's case-by-case basis, depending on the organist.
It's usually a hundred and fifty dollars for an organization.
How many of the students filled out that survey?
Yeah, so we currently have seventy-two seniors, and we had fifty-eight submissions, so most of the senior class participated. The ones that didn't were the ones that attend JBS full-time, and we tried to contact them, but they did not fill it out.
And then what about in terms of transportation to LC three? Did, do we ask that question of the students and their families?
So if we, if we did it at LC, we would provide busing for our students to get to LC for graduation.
What about the families?
Yes, we provided transportation for the families and the students as well, last year.
Okay, okay. And did anyone raise that issue?
No.
In the, okay.
I don't think we had not one parent or student participate or utilize a bus last year.
Any other questions?
Change is really hard.
Well, we don't, it's not to have a permanent change at all. This is a year-by-year thing.
I, I understand, but still.
I'm, okay, so I, I'm of two minds on this. One, because the college is still currently under crazy construction, I can see the parking issue. We dealt with parking issue. I, we all know about Finney in the summer with no AC. So I can see where Stocker is a better option. However, again, like you said, change is hard. I don't know, we got, the parents, have we had, have we talked to the parents of these students? Have, have we reached out? We asked the students. Students come on a different perspective sometimes compared to parents. Have we talked to the parents and asked them, would they prefer Finney or Stocker? I mean?
I don't think we had opportunities to talk to the parents yet. We've talked to the students, and we talked to the administrative staff and the senior class.
Okay.
Those are two people we spoke to about. And I believe if it's at LCCC, the graduation ceremony will be June the third, correct? And if we have it at Finney, it'll be May the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Saturday.
Has there been any feedback with regards to the difference in dates?
No.
How that impacts the students or anything?
May twenty what?
Seventh. May the twenty-seventh at Finney.
And June thirty.
June thirty, LCCC.
And that was, you know, that was one of my concerns, talking.
You need the mic.
Yeah, where's?
Thank you. One of the concerns I talked to Dr. Hall about, or that I, that I shared, was my concern for, we are, today you guys are gonna look at our next two-year calendars, that, you know, we have this uncertainty of picking a date for families who are coming in from out of town, and one of the things I did talk to Dr. Hall about, it would be nice that we could make at least plans two years so that we are getting it on our master calendar. Families are making arrangements, you know, a lot of people come into town for graduation, and so as we're having conversations so that families can make plans enough in advance, we, we do know we need to let Oberlin College and LCCC know sooner than later, because they're both still holding those dates for us. So just in planning, you know, in a, in a forward-thinking mentality.
You're on.
So first I just wanna thank you and, and say that I'm impressed. This is the first time, I've been here eleven years, first time that we've had a student come and talk about.
Teacher. Administrator, administrative assistant.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, but I don't make that mistake every day on TV, I hope. Anyway. Yeah, so, so anyway, so this is usually, this is usually something that the administration would, would tend to handle, and I respect, and I appreciate that you've, yeah, that you've taken the, taken the, taken this to the student body. To me, this is your, this is, this is their graduation. And, and I, you know, it's parents' graduation as well, but to me, it's their graduation. If this is what the students want, then I think that, you know, I would tend to respect that if it's also, you know, consistent with what the administration is looking for. I also, though, here, you know, it does make sense to, you know, to plan a year in advance, which means that you can't have the students voting on this every year.
Did we invite students to be here today?
I believe we've talked about having students here today to do the presentation and have a couple of them here. I'm not sure if they could make it here, especially the ones that were involved in the survey. I believe the senior class president was one of them, correct?
Part of our, part of our conversation was having students come in. You know, our current seniors were juniors last year. They've not, we've not been to Finney for a little bit because of the pandemic that's going on. Many of the current seniors who were juniors last year weren't at commencement. So in, in regards to, you know, they shared their opinions regarding things that they wanted to have at the ceremony as opposed to, they don't really have venue information, do you know what I mean? So we made sure that the survey reflected more the kind of things that they wanted to have. And I did share with Mr. Smith that, you know, in my first time here, the first ten years, I was the person at the door. I was the person who had to turn people away. I was the person who had to say, you have to sit upstairs. And those weren't always easy conversations, you know, that we came as a family, we'd like to sit as a family, and, and, the tradition of being at Finney was fantastic, but yet there were some uncomfortable things that happened. And, boy, pouring out the front doors and down the steps, you know, that was obviously a lot of great memories for doing that. But another venue has presented itself, and I think it's worth the group to consider.
Well, I guess I have a question as to, is this something that the board is being asked to vote on? Or is this just being presented to us for, so we can have the information?
Presented to the board for input, for consideration, as like Anne said too as well, this is a tradition, Finney. And if that decision, you know, last couple of years, or last year we had LCC due to COVID. And I view graduation as, a board plays a huge part in graduation. Sign-off and diplomas is one of the key parts of, you know, being a board member, the most exciting part. One of the most exciting parts of being a board member is seeing our kids cross the stage. So your input is valuable, and plus your eyes and ears of the community too, and we'd love to hear your decisions.
And last year's students were very disappointed to not be able to graduate at Finney. And while sixty-six percent said that they'd prefer LC three, there's still the rest of the students who I would guess are interested in that tradition of graduation at Finney Chapel.
And then you indicated that there were fifty-eight of the seventy-two that participated, and that the, the number that did not participate were JBS students. Well, they will still participate in graduation, or do they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, so we, we don't even have a hundred percent of the input from the students. Was there any type of input from the students last year, or was it just, that's what we had to do? Out of necessity?
Yeah, necessity out of COVID.
They tried, last year, my daughter was the senior class president last year, so they tried really, really hard to figure out how to be able to do it at Finney. And mostly because of the construction, it just, yeah, it just couldn't, it couldn't work out.
I believe one year we had it at the high school, inside a gym.
Yeah, that's when my son graduated.
Yeah. And the year before that was COVID year, so everyone came one at a time.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, right.
Yes. Just want to present information for the board. Any questions or any more input or?
I would encourage you not to make the decision for the next year at this point. I understand you want to be able to get that foresight, but one year of experience does not give enough information to be able to make long-term decisions.
I agree.
Especially since you don't have the input, as you've said, of the junior class, and this impacts them. And, you know, families have done this together, and yes, there are challenges, but there's, there's a community pride thing too.
Absolutely.
And so I, I would encourage you not to make a long-term choice at this time.
I agree, and I think things change year to year, so we're not sure if, I think it'll be almost be a year-to-year thing. And we're, we don't give the information out two years right now, it's okay. But the board will change in the next couple of years. It could possibly change, and circumstances change. Finney could get air in the next couple of years here. So that could happen.
Could be more parking.
Big, they could have parking, so all those things could happen in the next couple of years, we don't know.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks to students and Mr. Betts for your guys' hard work, and from the staff as well. Next, we have Black History Travel and Museum Presentation Events with Harriet Thomas. And this was discussed at our Town and Gal meeting at one time. And it's nice to see something that we discuss at our Town and Gal, some of the things actually coming forward now. We managed to work with Harriet to include access opportunities for the college and community members as well. So this is something that we expanded due to our curriculum director and Harriet as well. Expand opportunities to the college and also opening doors here for the afternoon time for community members to come in as well and have access. So this can be a phenomenal event. Okay, Harriet, I'll turn it over to you.
First, I wanted to thank all of the people that have been involved. I've been going to different people. Everyone that I've mentioned it to is on board. And this is, I'm actually gonna tell you about some of the projects that are going on for Black History Month in the Oberlin City Schools. The one project that we are gonna start off with, which goes from February first until March fifteenth, is the Journey to Civil, Journey for Civil Rights, and it's AR for Augmented Reality Exhibition. I put pictures around the cafeteria here, and anyone that's interested in looking at those after the meeting, you can go to your phone, go to your app store, look up Journey for Civil Rights AR, download it, and then once you download it, you accept it, and then you can scan a picture. I wanted to give just a demonstration. Once you scan the picture, then the picture will actually talk.
I'm Frederick Douglass, abolitionist, public speaker, and statesman who began my life as a slave. I shared my experiences through speeches and writings. I was talented in those areas and used them publicly to promote civil rights and women's issues. My autobiography became a modern classic, and historically speaking, a primary source document too. I also founded.
I'm not gonna leave it on very long, but we have twelve posters. And this was, actually, this was the idea of Mr. Ray Sutherd from the high school. I was up to the high school. I saw him in the cafeteria. I didn't even realize that he was the vice principal. And I started talking to him about projects for Black History Month, and he said, well, you know, I have these posters. And, you know, so I said, well, I'll come back. He showed them to me. So he had a set of posters, and I said, well, we can get another set of posters, and we can put half of the exhibit at the elementary school and half of the exhibit at the middle school, and then we'll put a full exhibit at the high school. Well, when I got the one exhibit, I took it to, brought it to the elementary school. Some of the people saw it, and they said, well, we want a full exhibit for ourselves. So we ended up getting a second, third exhibit now, so we've got one for each school. It's gonna, they're gonna be placed in the library at Langston Middle School, at the library at the elementary school. The librarians are gonna work with the students with these, so they will come in. This will be the only time that students at the middle school are allowed to bring in their phones or their iPads, and then that way they can work with that. So that's gonna be a project that is gonna go, we're gonna leave them up until March fifteen. Our next project is we have a locker decorating contest, which is gonna take place at Oberlin High School and Langston Middle School. The one thing, being a teacher for so many years in Oberlin, one of the problems that I always seem to encounter is I didn't like to give up my class time. And I know, I think that's the same thing that goes on right now. And so most of the projects that take place, we're trying to do them at the lunchtimes so that that way we don't disturb the teachers during the class time. There's only gonna be one time where we actually have to have the students out of class, and it's just for a short amount of time. But for the locker decorating contest, what we're gonna do, that's gonna be middle school and high school. And each student is gonna be given, they can get a poster, they make a poster, and then the poster is, I'm gonna need to show you. This is the poster paper, and the poster is gonna be, here, hold this one.
Sure, what do you want me to hold?
Hold that too.
I got it all.
And so what we do is we fold it in half, and then this way, in order to put it on the locker, we put it on the locker this way so that it's just on the students' locker. When you open it up, the poster will be in there. And so that way, it doesn't disrupt anyone else's locker. It's just the size of a locker and everything. So what we're gonna do is, the poster project is going to start on, supplies will be available from February first until the twenty-second, and then they will be able to post, put their things on the lockers on February twenty-third. That way, we don't wanna put them up too soon, because we don't want anyone coming by stealing other people's ideas or someone coming by and possibly trying to eliminate the competition by messing up someone else's locker. The judging will be on the twenty-fourth. The winners will be announced on the twenty-seventh. We've got gift prize, gift certificates for prizes. First prize is fifty dollars in gift certificates. Second prize is thirty dollars. Third prize is fifteen dollars. And we also have for teachers who want to decorate their door, we have prizes for teachers, fifty-dollar gift certificate for the teachers. That would be separate prizes for the middle school and separate prizes for the high school. Now, the only thing is that working on the posters, students can get the poster information. They can get all that. They can take it home, work on it at home, but we're also gonna try to get people to come in after school. I'm working with the seniors at Prospect School. I'm gonna go and see them tomorrow to see whether they can possibly come in after school and sit with our students and help them, give them ideas with posters. So that would be our second project.
Do they have a topic or anything, or can just do?
Well, it's black, it's black history, and the theme of black history this year is Still I Rise. And the reason why we say Still I Rise is because of, no matter what kind of adversity you go through, as long as you pick yourself up and you keep moving. And I think that's the one thing that we discover with all of the people that we were gonna see and talk about during Black History, and not just during Black History, but that should be the attitude or the philosophy that we have at all times. So it will be, and will probably award extra brownie points if someone happens to use some of the information that they get from the posters too. But it's, it's a black history poster, so anything that depicts black history would be during that, we'd use that during the posters. Then we've got school projects, which would take place during lunchtime, would be during the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth week of February. And we, I've spoken with students from Abusawa, which is a black student union, at the college. I was on a Zoom with them last night, and they're working on projects. They're gonna be bringing things in to the middle school and bringing things into the high school during the lunchtimes. Possibly dances or, you know, panel, but we're still working on what they're gonna do. But they seem to be very, very excited about that, so, and that will be. Then we've got the reading at lunchtime, our seniors during the lunchtimes at the elementary school. Where they have a short amount of time, we have the book that our students are all gonna be getting at the elementary school. It's titled Khalila and Khalid and Khalila, and it's called the ABCs of Black History. And it's, actually, it is written by, I talked to the about the person that wrote the book, because he's gonna be coming to Black History World Museum. And if you look, it has, you go to page one A, and it says A is for Muhammad Ali, and so it will give you information on Muhammad Ali. B would be another person. C, and so we probably took one of these at lunchtime. R is for Wilmer Rudolph. And it has a variety of people, you know, so it's not all just from one, you know, one era. So we'll be doing the lunchtime readings with the students here at Eastwood School, so that's the project for them. Then we have, those all take place during the month of February. Then we wrap up everything during the month of March, and that's when we're gonna be having our Black History 101 Mobile Museum. This was a museum, the person that's gonna bring it to us, he was a teacher in the Detroit schools, and he started a mobile museum. He travels all around the country. He has about three thousand artifacts, but he travels with a hundred fifty to three hundred artifacts. And so we're gonna be bringing him here. He's gonna be here at the elementary school in the gym for two days. The first day, we're gonna have our students from Eastwood, I'm sorry, the elementary school.
Change is hard.
And so they'll come in, you know, two at a time, and they'll be able to see the artifacts. And then on the second day, March seventh, we'll have the middle school come in the morning, and the high school come in the afternoon. We're gonna be getting help from the students, the black student union at the high school. The students wanna come in, they wanna help, and so they're gonna be helping the, with just the logistics of everything. They're gonna be dressed as characters, so they're very excited about, you know, dressing up and helping with that, so that's what we're, we'll do there. And the one thing, the Mobile History Museum, it's being actually funded by the J.B. Thomas Fund from the Community Foundation of Lurin County, and J.B. Thomas is my deceased husband, and they're a, a count there. And so the money they could use for the interest for that, we're using that for the project. I've been wanting to come back to the Oberlin schools to do things. I got tied down in a few years, you know, because of taking care of, you know, elderly parents and everything, but I'm back. And so, you know, I'm excited about trying to do something and try to get back into the schools, so we are gonna have that. Now, the schedule also, on March sixth, from three-thirty until five o'clock, the exhibit will be open to. will be open to the community. Anyone that wants to come and see it can come and see it at that time. For anyone that cannot make it at that time, he is also going to be at the college on the eighth of March and he will, you can view the exhibit at the college. It will be in Moffitt Auditorium, the lower level of Mud Library, from six o'clock until seven-thirty and then he will be lectured at seven-thirty at the college. But that's open to the community also because what we're trying to do, we're trying to get as many organizations, as many people involved in these projects as possible. So if anyone out there is interested in helping, I'm very, very interested in getting, giving your help. But we've got a lot of things going and we just want to make sure that everyone is aware of the things that we want.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wow. Well, thank you. This is awesome.
I do have one question. As downloading seems to be a problem for me. We can scan the pictures, it talks, but does the picture move?
It moves, yeah, it's like their mouths go.
Oh, now, the picture moves on your device, on your device. It doesn't move, well, yeah, yeah. But it does, it moves on the, on the device and you see. And the way you know it's working is usually when you put it up there, you scan that the I starts and then once the I starts, you tap on the I icon and it gives you all kinds of information.
Okay.
So I'm going to link these up for anybody that wants to check those out, even the one person who we did today. But we will have those available and even when the community comes, we'll have these available so that they can also experience these.
That's the question that I have. So when is this exhibit that we see here going to be open to the community?
On that day, on the sixth.
Okay, so that's this, that's exhibit, that's this exhibit?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this exhibit will be available on, it's actually available more than that if a community member wants to come in, they can make arrangements, I would think, to come into because they'll be in the library at the middle school in, from February first up until March fifteenth.
Okay.
They can go to the, they can contact the middle school, they can contact the elementary school, or they can contact the high school. And then that way they can make arrangements to come and see this exhibit at any time.
Okay.
The other exhibit is going to be available on that sixth of March.
Got it. Thank you.
Glad to have you back.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Thomas. It's awesome.
And I want to thank you also for your energy and your diligence because she has been working on this all year long and bringing the mobile museum, but that's a lot of planning because he has booked the volume.
Oh, wow.
So excited to bring him here and his personal donation as well of the poster set, carry us through a lot of the time and effort and the hands of the organization. So thank you very much. I also just want to say that the books that we are producing, actually, they're sitting in my office in boxes right now, here, tying that in with our literacy grant from the elementary school, our brothers' grant from one school, one school that we, that might be nonfictional book, as a student, we have a little ability to, to involve in that. So let's tie it with our great.
Awesome. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, no other question?
Thank you.
Have a few other updates as well before we go to facilities. I'd like to announce Eco-Olympics is back. So the district worked with the city and college to begin planning for Eco-Olympics. Eco-Olympics is a collaborative event with the college and the city. The Oberlin community will engage in various activities to save energy and encourage environmental awareness for a period of about two weeks. The activity was, was on hold because of COVID for the past two years. The previous years we had parades, we had a competition, I think Mr. Ible was always praised because his building won. We do have to check the system to see, make sure that happened. We'll use an environmental dashboard. Dr. Peterson has been phenomenal about helping out, make sure that's up and running here. The dashboard will assist in monitoring usage and progress. We have a meeting this, this week with the community members, teachers in college, in the college to discuss more details, to start planning events for those two week periods. Each school will compete with each other to see who can save the most energy. We're also trying to get a competition going with our central office and the fire department as well. So we'll probably, and they're hooked up, so we're probably a little competition with them and that's going to be something that Chief and I would have to find some kind of prize for the winner or something for us. Also, we have OHS Drama Club, had their first performance of the year over the past weekend and had more than a hundred guests at each show. It's fantastic production and we are so proud of our students and for the hard work they put in to, to the show as well as the staff and director, Austin Smith. And Austin's here today, thank you for the hard work in bringing back drama performance for us and our students. They are currently gearing up for their spring performance that will be held in April twenty twenty-three. Can I announce what it is or is? High School Musical.
Oh, my word.
Yes. I know, I, hopefully kids will remember that.
Were they even alive when it first came?
I'm still singing the songs, thinking, okay, our kids only know them, so I, so it's going to be really interesting. That's going to be a musical that we're going to have and thank you, Austin, for coordinating as well.
That's awesome.
Also, for the first time in the school's history, Langston Middle School will be hosting its own spelling bee for students of grades six through eight. The spelling bee will be held on, starting at five P M. on Tuesday, January thirty-first at the LMS Internasium. The event, which is being spearheaded by Langston Middle School, seventh grade E.L.A. teacher, Mrs. Margot Fox, is also a resident of the community here. She's also, another note, kept coordinating the chalk walk and the doggy doo for us too as well, real active in the community. It will feature two students from each E.L.A. class for the school, will be competing there and that's the spelling bee that we'll offer. And last, I'd like to announce our alumni basketball games have been rescheduled for Saturday, February eighteenth, starting at one P M. With the women game starting first, followed by two-thirty, the men will play after that. The Oberlin Schools Alumni Association will also have a booth at the game where they will be selling T-shirts, cost is a ten dollar donation per shirt. Includes my announcements, any questions? A lot of fun activities going on. Next, we'll have Mr. Ible give us a facilities update.
First facilities update. I'm used to standing here in the middle, is that a? All right, this is where we usually are. Punch list items are not done yet here in this elementary. We are close. I know, we keep telling you that.
We say that every month.
We're literally down to our last two or three. So we have made progress over, over summer or winter break, so there were things that were taken care of, but there are still a couple still hanging out there, so we're really crossing our fingers that we get to close this project here in February. So, fingers crossed. When that happens, I know you talked about a lessons learned type of slideshow so we can kind of recap the journey that we've been on, so we're, we'll be looking at doing that in February, March to bring you something to, lessons learned. Speaking of the play, I, I want to shout out and give thanks to some of our staff members who don't necessarily get a lot of thanks, our custodial staff who, who clear roads, but Eddie Barn, or Eddie Barnes, Greg Thomas, he's a new one of ours, Eddie Byrd, Sarah To, or Sarah Hill, were all in here on Sunday for the play. It started snowing, they were here getting it cleared out, so they didn't have much of a weekend as they worked through it. So things were safe, looked good, and then on Monday morning again, you know, they were right back in here. So I want to thank them again for doing a great job plowing. We plow and take care of our own things, so thank those guys for sure to get out there and, and make it safe for the rest of us. And I want to thank you for the new playground surface, so we had a chance to plow that as well yesterday and the kids were out on it today. It was nice, they could have been out on it yesterday as well, it was cleared off, but there was some miscommunication between the administration and myself about that was where we were going to be because the snow on the plastic and the, the things are get, get quite dangerous when they're wanting to play on that. So we explained that the hard surface and the running surface was your idea to get them out there and running when it's, when it's cleared off. So, again, I want to thank you for that. The kids were out enjoying the, the weather today and so it was great. It was. So, I said brief today.
Very. Well, thank you for that, that shout out to the custodial staff. Having driven in that snow on Sunday morning, that was no small feat, so I really appreciate them.
Yeah, for sure.
I wish they had been with me on my way to Independence, but.
For sure. And one of the savings, the cost savings is the new, the new dump truck last year, we work out where we get the salt from the city, so it's a lot cheaper to go get scoops of salt from the city and we can spread it rather than the bags. So that has been a, a nice change as well. So we can, we can take care of our own things and they will be out there. Dr. Hall, as soon as it starts in the morning, we'll be out there, I promise.
Yeah. We usually, you're right, Jim, thank our, our plow crew, they're usually out two, three, four, five A.M., out plowing, getting ready. And they're watching over the weekends as well and hopefully they're getting ready tonight. And also I'd like to thank our bus drivers as well because they're the ones that are driving, driving our precious cargo, our students, in the morning time as well, so we want to thank them as well. They're up here at probably five-thirty, six A.M., ready to go, getting the buses ready and warmed up for students to transport them. Doing a great job. concludes my report.
All right. Well, we're going to move on to action items. I will entertain a motion for approval of Board Items A and B. A is the approval of December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting and January tenth, twenty-twenty-three organizational meeting minutes. And B is the approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendars.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Board Items A and B. Any discussion or questions?
I think we should just comment that I appreciate that the district is flexible and taking into consideration others in the community and the fair, that, you know, it's a priority for the community and we're coexisting with the college, so I appreciate that we take that effort to do that.
I may as prove the regular meeting in January, we're going to meeting minutes, December thirteenth and January tenth, organizational meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the calendar. The district has the answer to that, work with the team administrators, teachers, develop a school calendar for the next two years. We took into consideration the college, city, and county fair and other district calendars. We also took consideration too, the district will take off on April eighteenth, observe April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, that'll be the solar eclipse.
Oh, I was wondering about that.
Yes, so that'll be solar eclipse day and we will be off that day as well, so our students have opportunity, students, parents, and staff have opportunity to observe it as well. My understanding, traffic's supposed to be at a standstill, it's supposed to be a great event, so we are taking off that day like other schools in the county as well. And we did a two-year calendar, normally do a three, but policy have changed, we're no longer able to do a three, we have to do a two-year calendar now instead of a three.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Why, why are we going to three?
Policy has changed, so previously we used to do three years and I guess policy has changed and guidelines have changed, now we're able to do a two-year instead of a three. So we're not able to do three anymore, so that's why we have two.
We're not burning down, right?
No. Yeah, then we get out of here.
Ah. Got it. Just wanted to make sure that we shouldn't be like going outside, being, being good role models.
And it kind of caused this Jim left, I didn't tell anyone. Jim saved himself.
Don't say that. Okay.
So, a question to approve item, A through B.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Amacka?
Yes. Next, we have treasurer items. I'd ask for a motion to approve treasurer items A and B.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments on the treasurer items?
I had a, do you want to talk first or do you want to ask my question first?
It doesn't matter.
I just had a question. And, and the checks printed, up at the very beginning, there's five oh six nine nine, monthly gas payment for Eastwood Prospect. And then later, seven one four six eight is Eastwood gas charges by the gas company. And I guess I'm just confused.
We, we buy our gas through a consortium, Ohio School Council Consortium, and then the gas company still charges us to trans, transfer it, so we pay two different people for it.
And the Eastwood Prospect number is just really high for one building that we, isn't ours anymore and one that we don't use compared to the other buildings.
It was thirty-five hundred versus the higher of the others was one eighty-nine.
That's just a bad name, that's actually the new elementary because we're using the Prospect's O.P.U., so.
Okay, so that.
So both Eastwood and Prospect are in that line item.
Are both the new elementary and Eastwood are in that line item. And yes, this, this building here, the gas runs year round because you have to regulate the humidity and to do that, you have to heat the air, cool the air, and then send the air out. So we're actually heating and cooling constantly to keep the humidity set at what the building needs the humidity set at.
This is one of these reasons why they told us that we weren't going to realize savings, like you wouldn't see cost.
Cost savings, right.
Savings. So it's more efficient.
It's efficient.
Better quality air, but it's not going to cost less.
Because plus it rotates air six times an hour in the building, so you're bringing in a ton of outside air that you have to either heat or cool. The heat exchange wheels do help that quite a bit. There's a huge, it's over six-foot circle wheel that brings in the cold air and then the returning air through the building either cools it or warms it as it comes in prior to it getting to the actual heating source.
And we appreciate cycling those germs out.
Yes. And it's ran through the health of filters, so. But yes, that's why that, that is like that. I, we have to use the same O.P.U. and even though Eastwood isn't a building anymore, we have to report it somewhere.
Right. Right. And then my other question on four zero zero eight nine, there were just several, several lines that don't say anything about what they are.
It's credit card.
Yeah, it's credit card, eight, nine, and ten, and most of them like say what they're for, but like there's, there's one for one thousand seventy dollars that doesn't say anything.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it to see what it is. Usually those li, what happens is we'll buy one item and it has to be spread over many cost points, so those other ones won't have descriptions because only the top one would have a description, even though they're being charged different amounts. So like when we buy textbooks, it'd be spread over all the buildings, but each line item is separate because some goes to special ed, some goes to regular ed kids, and then you've got each grade level and then you've got other things. So those things wouldn't have a description of what it was, it would have to be, you'd have to go up to the line above it.
Right, so the line above it says support and then there's three with no description.
Yeah. So I don't know what the support is, I'm sorry. If I looked at the account code, I could probably work it out for you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess maybe before we get these, if you could, anything that's something weird like support, just let us know vaguely what it is.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
I can go through it and add descriptions for you.
Most of them are very descriptive.
Yes.
Did you want to present on the?
Yes. We ended the month of December with seventeen million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Two adjustments, one for open checks of thirty-five, four, thirty-five thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars and twenty cents, and then we had a payroll, I had to transfer money because we paid on the second and it was at the holiday, so I had to transfer money in December to make the first payroll of the month. So we had a payroll adjustment of four hundred thousand, four hundred, five thousand, three ninety-one, eighty. Other than that, we balanced and we were all good. Interest for the month was twenty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-two cents. As for the all funds report, there's really, on most, most of our expenses, we are under fifty percent. There's a couple, the federal grants are a little bit higher and so is technology, but technology is usually like that because we buy a lot in August and then spread that out over the year. We still have nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars encumbered for the building project, which we're probably not going to spend all of, so that will be then flowing back to the O four once we get everything closed out. They did approve, I think, six change orders today, so those will be coming through so that we can get those. They finally completed all the paperwork for them, so most of them are credits back to us, but, and that's why that bill will drop. For the five-year. For the five-year forecast, um, really all in all, um, we're right in line with the revenues. We do get our first advance next Tuesday. And for the second half of the year, first half of the fiscal, or calendar year. And everything else has fallen in line to where we are projected. Again, we're under fifty percent on everything except for supplies and materials. And that's the same reason again, because we did buy all those textbooks and stuff at the beginning of the year. So.
Um, what about the other ob- objects? That one looks like it's a hundred and seventy-eight percent.
Other, other objects, that's, um, for about six, seven years, they didn't charge us, um, collection tax or collection fees from the county to collect our real estate taxes. Um, and the state didn't charge it either. Um, but now they're charging it again. So ninety percent of that is made up of auditors' fees and state fees to collect homestead and rollback and dispersals amongst the state. And also for the income tax, they keep part of that to disperse the income tax. Because that again, all flows into the state and then the state disperses it back to all the districts that have, um, money. So that's a collections fee. I mean, they have to employ people to do it. So.
And, and when did that kick in? Like when did that start?
It just started, last year was the first year that they started with the, um, redoing it on homestead and rollback and income tax.
Fiscal year eighteen, it was five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is that right? Or no? I can't follow the line. No, it was a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, it was a hundred and five. So really it's, they've always charged the real estate piece, but they haven't charged the homestead and rollback and income tax piece. So that's really where that's coming from. Yeah. Next, item B is the, um, last three years, we waived the, I don't know if you did it prior to me being here, but we've always waived the audit exit. There's really nothing that stands out on the audit. Um, the draft thought it was in the folder if anybody needed something to read before they went to sleep. Um, there were a couple items, um, one, the same as last year when they did the gap conversion. Me and the gap conversion people were arguing over the inventory and they, they turned it in prior to me getting the new elementary totally because we had an appraisal done this summer of the, and they filed it prior to me getting, um, the last report from the appraisal people. So we had to make a three million dollar adjustment to increase the value of this school. So that's a citation because the auditors, about five years ago, they decided when auditors make a correction to the filing report, it's a citation. Um, it used to be, they, they just did it. Um, and then the other one was on, um, the T one. Um, somehow we, we did double counts last year on the T one information. So we counted in August and we counted in January or October. So we have the October, but we can't find the January papers. So, and we filed on the January because they were better. So, and that's, again, it's just making sure. And Jim has it all nice and correct now. But, and then, yeah, that's really about it. And then the management letter, we're still discussing items on the management letter. Because the first item on the management letter is for municipalities and we're not a municipality. So they want us to have three readings before we pass any resolutions. And it's like, that's unacceptable. It'd take us years to get anything accomplished. So he's relooking at that and he's supposed to get back to me this week so we can get it filed by the end of the month. Other than that, there were, were no donations in December. So, um, that's all I have unless anybody else has any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, next we have superintendent consent items. I would entertain a motion approving consent items A and through B five. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Um, Dr. Hall?
Okay. Item A is approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Lorraine County Community College Credit Plus C C P agreement. It's an annual occurrence, um, agreement with them. We're kind of doing it early and I'd like to thank L C C for giving us information early so we can have C C P for next year. Um, that's done at either the Wellington branch, at a school. Some of our students actually go to Lyria branch, so they take C C P courses. Item B is approval of a personnel report. We have some additions. Um, item one is additional hours for staff members. Item two is leave absence. Item three is employment. We do have some, um, I'd like to welcome aboard some substitute teachers, some long-term subs and some custodians that came, um, that just got hired in the last couple of weeks. Thank you for your help and support as well. But, um, community, we're still hiring. So if you're out there and need any, um, peer professionals we can use, custodial help, please, um, apply at our central office. Also, we use subs as well. Item four is our termination. Item five is supplemental contracts. Uh, we have supplemental contracts for esports. Um, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for doing that. Uh, Washington D C trip and some supplementals for track, um, intermuros and baseball as well. Request approval of item A to be five.
Any questions or comments on those?
I was just curious about why the softball's intermural softball? So both Lori Jamison, the, the sup- the supplementals.
I believe we had, um, Abigail, the person that did it, did some intermural work over the, um, summer pieces. It wasn't during the season time. So they did work actually, uh, with our kids off season.
So this is something totally separate then?
Yes, it's totally separate.
Because I know we were looking for a softball coach.
Yes, we're still looking, yes. This person did some extra work with them and the youth league's trying to get them up and running.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just really excited to see the Washington D C teachers on here and that, that is starting back up again.
Yeah.
Love seeing that kind of thing. That and also like Ecolypics coming back, uh, Washington D C trips, all the things are coming back. Travel Museum, those things are coming back. We're getting out COVID. We're slowly, but we're getting out.
Slowly but surely.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. All right. Next we have comments, discussion, board update. Does anyone have updates for their committees that they, uh, participate on?
Uh, the finance committee met, uh, and we thanked, thanked Bob for, for, uh, talking to Craig Snodgrass and convincing them to let us save some money by, um, by lending ourselves money. So. Bob can explain that more. I also looked at the five-year forecast and there is a, you know, a couple of years from now when the Easter's money goes away. That's going to be a pretty significant hit to our annual, annual budget. Those are the things we talked about.
Mainly what we're looking at doing is, um, using general fund money to pay back the notes that we sold. Um, when we issued the debt, we didn't sell all of it in bonds. Thanks to Ken being, seeing the, staying flat, we paid very little interest on the note, on the two point two nine, two million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of notes that we issued three years ago. Now with interest rates climbing back up, we can save about a hundred thousand dollars a year by borrowing the money from the general fund to pay those off. And I'll have to change all the budgets. So you'll see that coming up once we prove it to, we'll prove the budgets so that we can pay them off in, um, April when it become due. And then, um, we'll do advances at then the end of the year to advance the money into the, into the fund. And then we'll have to advance it back in July, once we close out the book. So the debt fund will remain negative. I did talk to, um, auditor Snodgrass and, um, he is willing to keep us at the four point seven mils until those notes are paid off and the general fund's paid back. So. And it is down one mil from, or point one mils from when it was passed. So it has dropped, but it won't drop as fast as other levies will.
And I also want to thank, uh, auditor Craig Snodgrass for continuing to fight for getting our, um, nexus, the full nexus money.
Yes.
For reasons that are a mystery to me. The state has simply caved and did so when gas prices were at, you know, record highs. It makes no sense. But Craig is continuing to fight and I, I certainly appreciate that.
There is still a lot happening in the legislative front regarding kind of the restructuring of who does what in Columbus. Kind of the governor's office kind of taking back some control. So there, there have been hearings going on. Right now they don't have any more scheduled. But they've talked about letters that, uh, we might want to consider submitting, um, with our opinions about some of the changes that they're making, taking the, the power away from the elected officials. Well, the state school board's also weird because they're, it's both elected officials and governor appointed. So it's, it's already a hodgepodge, but at least it's not all.
Yeah, they're trying to change the balance.
Well, and, well, and they're trying to take some of the responsibility off of that body and put it back in the governor's office. So. Must have intimate knowledge of. Uh, and J V S, um, at our meeting last week, um, several of the school districts did talk about having their board meetings at the J V S. So, um, if we're, if we're thinking about like where we might want, if we're going to do a retreat or if we're going to do one of our study sessions, um, it might be nice to do it out there, um, see the facility, give everybody a chance.
It's not that much.
It's not, it's not that far away.
No, it's not.
It's got parking. And air conditioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. At five o'clock in the morning tomorrow.
And I guess this should be obvious, but there wouldn't be any cost for that, would there?
No.
Okay.
The endowment did meet. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, the endowment board met and we're gearing up for the spring cycle. So all the teachers should get their applications ready and, um, let us give you money.
Let us give you money.
Let us give money for your wonderful, exciting, um, things you have planned.
That needs to be on a T-shirt.
Yeah, we did also talk about maybe funding some smaller, um, student grants, like the Phoenix Grants, but we're still discussing.
Any other reports of committees, comments? Um, so next we have hearing of the public on other items. Do we have anyone sign up on our sheet back there at the door?
Yep.
We just need to give her the mic.
Yeah, it's right there. Yeah.
I have a question, um, kind of what Ann was speaking about with the, uh, the governor and the, the school board in Columbus. How will that affect our school board if they want to start banning books?
If the, if the state wants to ban books?
How will that affect Oberlin School Board's decision? Will, will we have to go along with it?
It depends. Yeah.
They're, they're pretty much going to have to drag me to jail.
I, I, I like the, the little libraries that like put flame on them because they, they only have the banned books.
So we'll, we'll find a way to get the banned books to our students.
Okay.
That's right.
I was just wondering because I, I can see it coming and I just wondered if we had any, talked about it or any pro-action is what we're going to do if it happens. Because we know, I mean, with our national teacher of the year, what he says. And we need to help them understand that it's, it's all learning. If we ban them, why are we banning them? What are we afraid of? And we need to teach and talk and help everyone understand everyone differently.
So we should educate them.
Yes.
Give them the information. Yeah.
It's a great point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, so our future meetings, we have February twenty-eighth is a regular meeting, six P M here at the elementary school. March seventh is a work session, which will also be six P M here at the elementary school.
Two weeks in a row.
Yeah, it is. We're going to be busy. And, um, with that, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. There's no discussion on an adjournment. I like to say that. Please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.